If you wish to address the council or the mayor this evening, you need to sign up for public participation before we start the meeting. If anyone's interested. And I see you're all flooding over there. I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as Bradley Burris leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you again for bringing us together again to discuss the important things of this city, to honor those who need to be honored and to provide for those who need to be provided for. We thank you and praise you for all you've been able to do tonight in your name. Amen?
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
And Mr. Coon?
Here.
Thank you very much. Public participation. Please note this meeting will be held in person at the Livingston Center 224 East Livingston and will also have remote participation available. If attending in person, a face covering... No, that's not true anymore. Face covering. Unless you haven't had your shot. In-person participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the council table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Our first speaker this evening will be Jason Schumard.
It's like starting off by saying, I'm usually, I'm not used to sitting in my back. But I, I, I see some familiar faces, so I'm okay. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, to thank council and, and to let everybody else know here that it is an honor to be a police officer in Monticello. I, you know, I, I know a lot of other officers in different towns and what they're going through right now. Crazy. The citizens of Monticello make this a great place. Just wanted to say that. My name's Jason Schumard, Monticello Police Department. I'm gonna read this, 'cause we do a little bit better. "I want to take my speaking time to express my appreciation for Mrs. Amber Oberheim and the entire Oberheim family. Not a day goes by that I don't hear someone talk about how Amber has said something or done something to further the cause began, that began on a terrible morning not long ago. Knowing that she and her family are out there championing right over wrong makes my career path a little easier to navigate. Like I told fellow officer and Chris's brother Joe Oberheim, a day after the services, I feel at ease knowing that I might have to answer a call someday, like the one that took his brother. I'm at ease because I know that I'm part of a community that will stand behind my family should something happen to me. I'm also at ease because I know that Amber and her family are out there battling not only for Chris, but for all of us peacemakers." Thank you.
Amy Shorco?
Hi. Hi, Mr. Stevens. How are you?
She wasn't Amy Shorco when I had her.
Thank you all so much for, for allowing us to be here and thank you for, for what you said. Your emotions definitely get the best of you and really, you know, unexpected times. So I'm Amy Shorco and I'm Amber Oberheim's sister. And I just kind of wanted to quickly just tell all of you guys, as someone who, who grew up in this community, I have really always understood the value of small town and support. However, with the loss of my brother-in-law, Chris, we have come to see that in an entirely new light. I have to say, I am so proud to be a member of this community and drugged my, my husband back down here from Chicago. And I'm, I'm just proud to see the way that they have reacted during this tragic situation. On behalf of the entire family behind me and, and the ones that aren't here today, I cannot think of a better way to honor Chris and the hero that he is by renaming the future site of the sports complex, sports complex to Oberheim Park. And any and all support by each of you is truly appreciated.
Thank you. He's not gonna speak, thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. More, do you have anyone?
Yes, Mr. Schreffler.
Mr. Schreffler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I, I wanted to comment and hope that there's a Plan B in place in case it's not possible to, to raise the $10 million for this project. I think it's a, a, a great thing to do to name it, rename it as you have, but it has been 12 years and nobody's been able to raise enough money even to repay the loans that have been made to the project so far. So I don't know where this is gonna go from there, but you know, we've had the foundation and according to their, their 909 filing, they still don't have any money to repay the money that's been loaned to the project. So, uh, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else more? Joe has one that was submitted as an email.
This is from Sarah Christman, who is a Monticello resident. And she writes, "What if anything can the city do to make Vioben reduce the smell they are producing? The smell is going to have a negative impact on businesses near Vioben and also on the square. Restaurants on the square that are already struggling, not to mention property values of houses nearby. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. Consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report claims dated June 29, 2021 through July 12, 2021. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, June 28, 2021. Treasurers report, May 2021. Permit report, June 2021. Fire report, June 2021. Police report, June 2021. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may we have a roll call?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. The mayor's report this evening is brief. Don't forget, the Monticello Farmers Market Thursdays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on State Street by the Community Building. Monticello Movie Nights presents Little Rascal, sponsored by State Bank of B-Mint, Monticello, this Saturday, weather permitting, in downtown. The Kona Ice Truck will be on hand and the movie begins at sunset. Monticello Garden Walk is returning showcasing five gardens in the community this Saturday, July 17. Tickets can be purchased at the Monticello Chamber office prior to and the day of the event. And save the date for the 703 Honor Celebration and Parade Saturday, August 7. Congratulations to Willow Tree Missions, who will be purchasing the Monticello Gymnastics Academy building in downtown to relocate their shop. This will be a great addition to the downtown and provide activity in the building that was formerly used for other things. It's vacant right now. So that's that report. Let's move on to new business. Resolution 2021-41. A resolution declaring Lot 402 of Apple Tree Fourth Subdivision and the recreational improvements thereto as Oberheim Park. Whereas the city of Monticello so desires to honor Champaign Police Officer and Monticello resident Christopher Chris Oberheim, who was shot and killed in the line of duty on May 19, 2021. And whereas Officer Oberheim began his career in law enforcement at the Decatur Police Department in 2000, where he quickly became a respected officer who led by quiet example. He always looked forward to playing in the annual PBPA State Softball Tournament and making memories with his fellow officers. And whereas Officer Oberheim transferred to the Champaign Police Department in Champaign, Illinois in 2008, where he continued to protect and save his community, serve his community. During this time, he received two medals of valor and countless letters of commendation for his courageous acts of selfless bravery. And whereas Officer Oberheim served as a patrol officer and as a member of the Special Weapons and Tactics SWAT team. And whereas Officer Oberheim dedicated a great deal of his time off-duty to coaching several successful girl softball teams, his influence on the field was felt by many who loved and respected him. And whereas Officer Oberheim was husband to Amber Oberheim and father to Hannah, Avery, Addison, and Aubrey Oberheim, he valued his family as his first priority and his four daughters were his absolute pride and joy. And whereas Officer Oberheim's end of watch was on Wednesday, May 19, 2021, while responding to a 911 domestic disturbance call with fellow Champaign Officer Jeffrey Creel. And whereas the Oberheim family approves of this dedication and remains humbled by the city council's decision to honor Officer Chris Oberheim, husband, father, son, brother, uncle, beloved coach, trusted friend, and respected hero. Now verbe resolved by the City Council of the City of Monticello, Pyatt County, Illinois, the foregoing recitals being incorporated herein by reference as follows. "In recognition of Champaign Police Officer and Monticello resident Chris Oberheim and his professionalism and enduring dedication to serving and protecting the citizenry of multiple communities and his courageous and heroic actions in the line of duty, the city hereby declares that Lot 402 of Apple Tree Fourth Subdivision and the recreational improvements thereto shall be named Oberheim Park. Effective date, this resolution shall be effective forthwith upon its passage, its approval in the manner provided by law." Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-41?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Terry, do you have anything to add before I call for a vote?
No, I think that was well said, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments or questions before we proceed? Hearing or seeing none, may we have a roll call?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Being here this evening, that speaks a wealth about your family and how close it is. And we, we have really enjoyed having you in the community. We really enjoy the presence of Amber and her daughters in this community. So thank you very much for your, your sacrifice and your efforts. Moving on. If you all wanna go, you can. It's just dull, dulls will from now on. Resolution 2021-42. A resolution regarding the Oberheim Park Development Fund. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome the Oberheim family as well as law enforcement that is here with us tonight. I know the Monticello Police Department and Pyatt County Sheriff's Department are here tonight. I appreciate their presence as well. Resolution 2021-42. Carlos McLellan, the Recreation Director, and Mandy Connes, Assistant Recreation Director, have been diligently working with not only the Recreation Foundation, but as well as Alderman Coon, the Chairman of the Rec Committee. And, and they've done a lot of good things of recent with those two committees. And actually, Resolution 2021-42 was Mandy Connes's idea. Then she came into my office, as she does, to update me on committee meetings and foundation meetings and, and so on and so forth. So Mandy put this bug in my ear and I took off and sprinted with it because I think it's a great idea and I hope you share the same sentiment. So thank you, Carlos and Mandy. If you may recall, some of you weren't on this council. Some of you were. 2014, the city council created two funds within the City of Monticello General Fund Account. Resolution 2014-10 created a Parks and Playground Fund that included all gaming revenues received by the state of Illinois each month be allocated exclusively for the purpose of providing new parks and playground equipment. This Parks and Playground Fund had received revenues in the amount of $450,729 through the end of fiscal year 2020. Resolution 2014-11 created the Recreation Development Fund in the amount of $400,000 for the purpose of providing the required match to a possible future IDNR OSLAG grant. Resolution 2021-42 in front of you this evening specifically recalls $100,000 from the Parks and Playground Development Fund and $400,000 from the Recreation Development Fund to the General Parent Account and transfers $500,000 from the General Parent Account to the Oberheim Park Development Account. Resolution 2021-42 also renames the recently appointed 38er Multi-Use Outdoor Recreation Committee as the Oberheim Park Development Committee and authorizes the committee to negotiate and recommend development agreements with the assistance of our city attorneys to the city council no later than on October 15 date you mentioned at the Crete Impact Committee. It is recommended the city council discuss and approve Resolution 2021-42 as presented.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions to Terry before we proceed?
I'm assuming that, that's a matching grant. I'm assuming that grant is gone. So we're not, we're not leaving $400,000 on the table that could come from...
There will no longer be $400,000 allocated for a possible OSLAG grant.
There's no OSLAG grant that would, that would come to us anyway.
There is. There's always a possible OSLAG grant. Some years they have it, some years they offer it. And it's a very competitive grant.
Okay.
We actually got an OSLAG grant for the old pool. You don't remember when that was?
It was like 1998.
1998. So that is a possibility. We are reallocating a total of half a million dollars to the development of Oberheim Park.
That I understand. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing out on more money for Park.
Anyone else?
I just think that it's a, it's a charge for us to, to make this project happen. We've talked about this for a decade and I think this helps give us the beginning of momentum. And so I just invite everybody to, to be on board with... And I know that there's a lot of, there's, always has been support for this project. We've had a difficult time trying to raise the money for it. And so kind of feel a little of the weight to, to make sure the project is seen to fruition as, as short order.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-42? A resolution regarding the Oberheim Park Development Fund?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, I am your roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 2021-43. A resolution amending the rules for meetings of the city council. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution removes, the language pertaining to the adoption of an ordinance shall normally require two readings. This language was originally added to the rules for council meetings on April 5, 2016 with the passage of Resolution 2016-28. A review of meeting minutes suggests that the first time council invoked this practice did not occur until a year later on May 22 and has occurred a total of five times since 2018. This is just ordinances. The resolutions have never required the two readings. But it's important the city council will still be able to table, to defer, to postpone, and to reconsider, as has always been the practice, with and prior to Resolution 2016-28. In your packet, if you refer to item I, double I, triple I, and four, under H, on page two of four of the attached proposed resolution, it spells out the tabling. It is recommended city council review, discuss, and adopt Resolution 2021-43 thus approving the rules of city council meetings.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-43? A resolution amending the rules for meetings of the city council?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate the change. You realize, you saw the train wreck the last meeting, so... And there's six or eight ordinances. You have to go through the waving. It's just, I get confused. Thank you. All of your persons' reports. Let's start with Mary this evening.
I thought it was a little ironic as our, our speakers came to the table tonight. I pretty much had said the same thing to the two gentlemen to my left right before the meeting started. I'm, I'm so proud to be part of this council and part of this community. Not, not only because of the support shown to the Oberhinds, but we're, we're very fortunate to, to be in Monticello and part of Monticello. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Wendell?
She's starting out on the right foot. Tag on to various comments. Thank you all for coming tonight. I spoke to this before, but I'm more than honored to be a part of it and I hope to see it get off the ground as quickly as possible.
Just as, in addition to the wonderful people who are here and the appreciation to the town we've been speaking about, I was at the Kirby Auxiliary Luncheon today and did not realize, I don't know, I don't know how many people understand, these ladies gave within the last, I don't know, 50 years, almost three-quarter million dollars in money back to the hospital for stuff that they couldn't afford. And almost three-quarter million dollars to scholarships to students in the area. And they do, they do an amazing job and they make a nice lunch.
Thank you, sir. That's good. Michael?
I just had one question. And I don't know if that's for Terry or whatever, but have the office hours changed at the city building? Or are they...
Will be eight to five like we were.
It is, okay. I don't know.
Okay. Thomas?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking forward.
I have nothing tonight.
Sammy?
I'd also like to tag on to what everybody else says. I think it's an honor to be part of this community. And I also think this is a prime example. You know, after the biggest storms, there are some good things that do come of that. It's nice to see the positive after something like that and help reminds us that there, there is good. Yeah, on the other side. Pertaining to the letter that we got. I do think the smell up around the square and with that few block radius is, is almost unbearable on specific days, depending on which way the wind is and so forth. And I really do think it's something we probably need to take a look at if it continues.
I almost forgot to mention that. Terry may be going to mention it in his report. But there's a meeting with Vioben tomorrow, tomorrow morning at 10:00.
It's just a...
Oh, it's disgusting.
Yes. It's just one, it's not very...
You know, every time I smell that, I see money.
Yeah, there you go.
It's better to have jobs than it is to not have jobs. It's an unfortunate thing to worry about. All those people that live in Decatur have lived with that forever. It's not much better than what we have here, so...
I wish I had something more to say, but I feel like everyone has pretty much said what I wanted to say. And yeah, just thank you all for coming and showing your support to the Oberheim family. And this is a wonderful community. I grew up here, went to school here. You know, I'm so happy to be a member of it and I'm really excited for the positive direction and changes that are headed our way, so...
Thank you. Terry, chief, chief's report?
Uh, not tonight. I don't have any report.
Not tonight, thank you. Fire chief's report, John Repke.
Mayor, I want to second Officer Schumard's comment about myself and firefighters in Monticello really proud to be serving as citizens of Monticello. Really is a great community. So thank you for that. We ran 35 calls last year, last month, 25 medicals and 10 fire calls. One of the fires we had was actually a kitchen fire in one of our firefighters' homes.
Nice.
So we got pretty quick service. Kitchen was pretty much destroyed with the rest of the house. And nobody got hurt. He got out and his family got out. So it was, it was pretty good. So I also want to thank the city council for voting for our new members on the fire department last month. And they have started and they have contributed and they are going through training, so we appreciate that. Fire department was also involved in movie night on the 19th. We had a truck out there with firefighters and we're gonna continue to do that, have some presence at the movie night. The kids can come out and see the trucks and the firefighters and that's great. This, this month, we did some training with the, we did truck maintenance and we did, we had, usually after any type of house fire, we have after action report. We sit and talk about all the things that we could do better and then some of the things we did right. So we kind of go through that. We did that. It's always a learning experience when we do that. We also did a tour of the Pyatt County Mental Health Building. Dan Keenix, who kind of, him and Tony run it. They always like us to come through every, every year and kind of see the building and see, and they talk about the residents that come in there and come and go. So it's always great, especially for the new firefighters to see. Especially, we go to different buildings and see what we have to deal with if we have to go into. I mentioned a couple of months ago, we have a program running called Be Alarm. And it's where we will provide smoke detectors for residents that need smoke detectors. We really haven't gotten much response to that. The Office of the Fire Marshal gives us free smoke detectors. We get 24. We've only put one in. We've only had requested for one. So I guess I'm reaching out to you guys. If you have any constituents that need smoke alarms, call the fire department, we'll be ready to come and put them in. They're free, 10-year, limited bat, you know, limited life batteries for 10 years. Go ahead and put them in. I know Steve's helped us with that and put it in the paper. So if anybody wants to do that, that'd be great. And lastly, as you know, this September 11th is the 20th year of the 909. And the Pyatt County Firefighters Association, we're putting together a program for that day. It's still kind of preliminary, but let me outline just a little bit what we want to do. We're working with the police. We talked to John and Sheriff Vogelsang and all the fire departments in Pyatt County. First thing we want to do on that morning is do a ceremonial parade with all the fire departments and the trucks to each of the towns of Pyatt County. It starts at 8:00 in the morning. We're gonna get with Steve, we'll have that in the paper, Steve. As soon as we firm this up. And go from each town in Pyatt County, each department, get out and walk a little bit in each town and get back in and go to the next, next town. Then we want to meet back here at 12:00. We want to have a ceremony at the high school. We're working with Dan Sheehan, who's on the fire department, to put together a program. I have a pretty much preliminary guest in Rodney Davis to come and speak for us. I contacted Chip and Rose's office. I contacted Chip Rose's office, he was going to come and speak too, possibly. We're going to have a ceremony, we'll put on flags, get the students from the high school to help us maybe read the names of the companies that were killed on 9/11, work with the police to honor the police department, the fire department, and the EMTs that were killed that day. So, kind of preliminary, working on this program, but that's kind of what we're working on right now. I want to mention this month, because next month, we should hopefully firm that up and then it'll be 9/11. So, I hope you guys can join us on that day, it's a Saturday morning and I'd like to see all of the public come out and support the fire, the police, the EMTs. I think that's all I have.
Thanks very much, John. City administrators' report, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did reach out to representatives from Vioben last week, I got a very quick response. Like you indicated, Mr. Mayor, we'll be meeting with them tomorrow. And the Seal Code Operations, the annual oil and chip program, we are trying to work around the Kirby Triathlon, that's Saturday, August 7th. You put down fresh gravel on those 10-wheel tires, it's a recipe for disaster, so we're trying to work around those and it may be a little bit further into August before it's done, so I just want to mention that.
Can I ask a question? When does school start?
August 18th.
Okay, so hopefully it'll all be done before August 18th?
Hopefully, yes.
We're going to lean just a little. It'd be great if it happened one year.
I've got the triathlon and I got school and I got Sage Drive. If you avoid Sage Drive, everybody until that project is done, I'd go by there tonight.
August the 18th, isn't it?
August 18th.
So don't forget it. Yeah, write that down again so you can throw it away. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all I have.
I know how to shut you down. Anyway, anyone else have anything for the good of the cause this evening? All these people that talk about how proud they are of this community and what a pleasure it is to serve are right on. This is the... I always wanted to be the mayor and I got to be. My friend John back there was going to be the mayor of May, he thought when I left, he moved out of town, so he can't do it anymore. Anyway, since no one has furthered the meeting, is there a motion to dismiss?
Unmoved.
I can't even use it.
Unmoved.
We're going to adjourn if you don't mind. How about a second?
Okay.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you all for being here this evening.
You're all dismissed.